This March the 9th, 2023, in the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk present here in council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. We thank you for participating in your city government, and we ask that you please silence all electronic devices. With that, I call this meeting to order. I'd like to ask if you would, please stand for the invocation. I'd like to welcome Pastor Russell Cheatham from Heart Cry Chapel with us tonight, and as after he concludes with the invocation, please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening. As I was thinking about coming to this meeting this evening, I got to thinking, you know, we really don't show each other enough appreciation.
Need to talk into the mic, please.
We don't show each other enough appreciation, and it maybe might be a nice thing to start our meeting tonight by showing that appreciation to you, good men and women, for serving us. So let us do that. Thank you. Let's pray.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Heavenly Father, we worship you tonight. Thank you for your presence with us. Thank you for being our rock. You are faithful, and we thank you for your saving love. We thank you, dear God, for the opportunity to gather as a city council tonight. Bless the work done here. Oh, God, thank you that we're Americans in a land that is favored by you and has been favored for generations. Oh, God, forgive us for our failures and unbelief. Give us courage to stand up for your righteousness and give us wisdom. And may the decisions that are made in this meeting tonight help your people and encourage us all to want to love and serve you for your name's sake. We offer ourselves to you and our city, our state, our country, and our world. And oh, God, bring revival to our hearts. And may you receive all the glory, our God and our Father, and all of God's people said.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Urban. Councilmember Matheny. Here. Councilmember Gilbert.
Here.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Here.
And Mr. Urban has an excused absence tonight. Madam Director, do you have any updates to our agenda?
There are no changes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. At this time, we have a proclamation that I'm going to share here from the dais, and it will be followed up by a presentation. Whereas the city of St. Cloud has experienced severe weather in the past in the form of extreme rainfall or tropical system events resulting in flooding that has caused damage and flood losses to homes and buildings in all areas, whether they are high-risk, special flood areas, or low-to-moderate risk flood zones. And whereas the city of St. Cloud is a voluntary participant in the National Flood Insurance Program that provides residents with the opportunity to protect themselves against flood loss through the purchase of flood insurance at reduced insurance premium rates, as well as setting higher regulatory standards to reduce the flood risk and potential flood damage to their property. And whereas, through active participation in the National Flood Insurance Program, the city of St. Cloud saves flood insurance policyholders just over $50,000 per year. And whereas, the reduction of loss of life and property damage can be achieved when appropriate flood preparedness, control, and mitigation measures are taken before a flood. And whereas, residents may contact the city's floodplain manager at 407-957-7275 to find out what flood zone they are located in, if flood insurance is required, and how they can reduce their risk of damage from flooding. And whereas, public education and awareness of potential weather hazards and methods of protection are critical to the health, safety, and welfare of residents, the Florida Floodplain Manager Association have declared the week of March 6 through 10, 2023, as Flood Awareness Week to promote awareness and increased knowledge of flood risk, the availability of flood insurance, flood protection methods, and how to prepare for emergencies. Now, therefore, I, Nathan Blackwell, Mayor of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, in coordination with Osceola County, do hereby proclaim March 6 through 10, 2023, as Flood Awareness Week in the city of St. Cloud, and further encourage the citizens of St. Cloud to increase their knowledge of how to protect themselves and their property from flooding. And at this time, we'll have a presentation by one of our staff members who has done amazing things for our city in the area of flood prevention and safety, and so we'd like to recognize Leanne Tomano at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, good evening. Leanne Tomano, Floodplain Manager for the city of St. Cloud. Since it's National Flood Awareness Week, I thought it would be appropriate to provide council and our community with an update on our floodplain management program. So the city voluntarily participates in what's called the National Flood Insurance Program in order to effectively regulate and mitigate the impacts of flood damage within our community. Flood insurance is available to property owners within our community because we participate into this program. This program also offers federal assistance after a declared state of emergency. I do want to note that every property within the city of St. Cloud is at risk for flooding, and that we plan and prepare for all areas within the community regardless of what flood zone you're in or level of risk. In addition, the city voluntarily participates in FEMA's Community Rating System program. This is an incentive program that provides discounts to flood insurance policyholders. The city has recently achieved a Class V rating, which saves our policyholders a total of 25%, and this 25% discount is available now to all flood insurance policyholders regardless of their flood zone. Flood Zone AE or A, which is high-risk, Flood Zone X, for those who choose to voluntarily purchase flood insurance, they all now all get the 25% discount. Last year, we saved policyholders a total of over $82,000 on their insurance premiums, and with the number of homes constructed in the flood-prone areas just within the last year, the savings are projected to greatly increase further. I do want to mention, I'm sorry, I'm not pushing my slides. There's where we went from a Class VII to a Class V. We're now at 25%. This is the annual savings. I do want to mention that those flood insurance policies down at the bottom of the slide, the number of policies, those are last year's, and they have greatly increased voluntarily and required by mortgage lenders. So looking at this map, this is a snapshot of something exciting I just wanted to share with you. I want to mention that the city is launching a public online GIS-based mapping tool that allows anyone to search an area within the city limits, to identify the flood zone, to obtain their elevation documents, elevation certificates, sometimes their surveys, or flood certificates, and it also provides the minimum development criteria, design criteria for the elevation for that specific property. We're super excited that this program's going to go live within the next week. That's the presentation and updates that I have for you this evening. I want, the community is encouraged to reach out to us by contacting the building department, and I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
And we certainly thank you and your staff for all the savings that you have saved our city as well as certainly our residents. Does anyone here on the dais have a comment you'd like to make? Councilwoman Matheny?
Thank you. I know it was very hard to change classifications, and I know it's even harder to keep it. So I know I support everything you guys are doing, and I'm sure the rest of our council does, so I know it's a, because the county is doing it as well, so I know it's one thing to get there, and it's a whole nother effort to stay there, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the Citizens Forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not on the agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a sign-in form to be provided to the presiding officer prior to or as soon as is practical thereafter the person addresses the council. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Adera?
Here.
Yes, sir. Would you come forward and state your name and address?
Good evening, council. My name is Ybsira Adera, address 4520 Durham Drive. My name is Ybsira, and I'm here from the U.S. Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Recovery and Relief, where we provide long-term, low-interest loans to homeowners, renters, small businesses, and private nonprofit organizations who have been impacted by the recent hurricane disaster. I'm here today because I want to talk about the Economic Injury Disaster Loan that the Small Business Administration provides. This loan is working capital that is given to businesses and private nonprofit organizations in order to help them meet their necessary financial obligation in times of a storm. For example, if a hurricane hits a particular town and a business is still operating, however the employees are not able to go to work, then we would compensate that business for the loss in profit they incurred during the disaster. There's three ways that business owners and nonprofit organizations can apply for an SBA loan. You can visit our Business Recovery Center or Disaster Recovery Center, which is jointly operated with FEMA. You can visit our website at disasterloanassistance.sba.gov, or you can call our 1-800-TOLL NUMBER and request for a paper application, fill it out, and submit it by mail. Now, in order to be eligible for an SBA loan, an applicant must have credit that is acceptable to the SBA. An applicant must prove their repayment ability, and for any loans that's given over $25,000, the SBA requires a collateral, which is a security deposit, and that's most likely going to be the applicant's home. It's important to understand that SBA provides businesses and nonprofit organizations up to $2 million in order to help them to repair or replace real estate that's damaged because of a hurricane, or in order to help them, to give them capital for profit that's lost. The interest rate on these loans are as low as 2.3% for homeowners, 3.3% for businesses, and again, 2.3% for private nonprofit organizations. The benefit of taking an SBA loan is that we offer this thing called a 12-month 0% interest rate, where when you receive an SBA loan for the first year, you don't have to pay the loan back, and the interest rate on the loan will not start to accrue until after the first year is over. Again, the deadline to apply for an SBA loan, Economic Injury Disaster Loan, is September 13th, so we're asking the city to help us circulate that information so that people who are impacted can receive the adequate assistance that they need. And then, real quick, I have a question for you guys, council. Has there been significant damage by either Hurricane Ian or Hurricane Nicole here in the city of St. Cloud?
Yes. We'd like to ask our city manager if she'll speak to that.
We had some damage. We did also offer some training with SBA for any businesses. I think we did it in December on how to apply, and so we've also helped advertise the loans.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that information. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak during the Citizens Forum? If not, we'll move on to our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the Consent Agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, staff and members of the city council, which should speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. First of all, are there any items on the consent agenda that the council is wishing to address? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address anything on the consent agenda? If not, could I entertain a motion regarding the adoption of the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Fletcher and a second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban. Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
That brings us to public hearings. The next portion is public hearings, and we'll begin with item number one. Madam Clerk, will you please read that into the record?
I have a public hearing for ordinance number 2023-09, an ordinance of the city of St. Cloud, further amending the city of St. Cloud police officers and firefighters' retirement system adopted by ordinance number 2006-125, as subsequently amended, amending Section 6, benefit amounts and eligibility, providing for codification, providing for suborbidity of provisions, repelling all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
Good evening. Justin Kleisner, HR Director. The ordinance before you is here for a final hearing. The request of the Police and Fire Pension Board with support from city staff to provide a one-time ad hoc 3% cost of living increase for former public safety employees who retired prior to 2016. These employees do not receive the automatic 1% COLA that was approved in 2016. This would become effective October 1st, 2022 retroactively, and cost approximately $75,000 annually. And city staff recommends approval. There we go.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council.
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from the mayor. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Deputy Mayor Urban. Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
Brings us to items two and three on the agenda, please.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2022-49, an ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation industrial to approximately 12.313 acres identified as 5700 Nova Road, located east of Nova Road, west of Pine Grove Road, north of Hunter's Ridge Boulevard, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the planning commission, recommendation, and proof of publication, applicability, and effect, suborbidity, copies on files, and effective date. First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2022-50, an ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the Land Development Code of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately 12.313 acres identified as 5700 Nova Road, from AC Agricultural Development and Conservation County to a I-I Industrial 1. City zoning designation with an industrial future land use designation adopted by ordinance number 2022-49, generally located east of Nova Road, west of Pine Grove Road, north of Hunter's Ridge Boulevard, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map, filing of planning commission, recommendation, and proof of publication, suborbidity, and effective date.
Good evening. Dagmar Estegara, Planning Manager. This is the first reading of a comprehensive plan amendment and zoning amendment for the property as indicated by the city clerk's office. The staff recommends approval. The property proposed future land use designation is industrial, and the proposed zoning is I-1. The development is compatible with the surrounding areas and the facilities that do not adverse any city's facilities. As you can see, the future land use designation illustrates it's surrounded by a LDR, which is Low Density Residential. This area is still under, currently under development, and most of the land surrounding it is still within the county, and it is agricultural, but this is a projected area that the city is preparing to make this an area with a node of employment centers and commercial uses. So this is our first step into that, heading to that direction. The proposed future land use designation of I-Industrial and the zoning of I-1 is appropriate for what the city is preparing for in the future for this area. It meets a strategic goal of growth management, economic development, and professional workforce. At the planning commission of February 21st, they recommended approval, and in staff recommendation, they recommend approval, and it's the request for the city council as well to recommend approval of the future land use designation and the zoning designation. The applicant is here if you have any questions, and are also available to answer any questions you may have.
So you're going to move on to the next one?
Oh, I, it's including both.
Are you including both?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And 1%.
Is the applicant here would like to speak to this?
Hello, John Porter, Osceola Engineering 1003 Florida Avenue. I'm representing the applicant on this project. Mr. Rocker does have one request with this rezoning. Outdoor storage is a permitted use under the I-1 zoning category. However, there's an ordinance that was passed in 2016, 2016-09 is the number, that essentially states that outdoor storage of items other than operable vehicles are not allowed unless approved by conditional use, and can't cover more than 10% of the land. Mr. Rocker plans to develop the property, doesn't have specific plans at this time. It's ultimately going to be tenant-driven, but doesn't want to overly limit the use of the property of certain tenants. Obviously, with an industrial use, there could be needs for a storage of items outside that may exceed the 10%. And Mr. Rocker would like to kindly request that the council, as a part of the motion to approve the zoning change, waive the requirement for the conditional use and the 10% area. Obviously, this is the first reading and can be processed as you go into the next one, but that is one request that he had. I also wanted to provide a couple additional notes that I thought were relevant. The adjacent property to the east, it also borders a little bit on the south, is a proposed bus depot, which would, you know, be a similar use to, style used to what Mr. Rocker's proposing. And additionally, I do think it's a good opportunity for industrial use to come into the city, as staff recommended. GAI did envision St. Cloud for you guys, the master plan of the city, and one of their slides, it showed 90% of the people working in the study, or living in the study area, go outside of the study area for work, so this is a good opportunity, I think, for the city to, you know, invest in jobs here, here in the community locally, so happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Mr. Inzares, can you speak to this item?
Well, just to the one point that was brought up, first, I'm hearing of it, and frankly, I'm not sure I, we can accommodate it under the way this matters before you at this point. So there isn't a provision, I think, to waive another requirement of the code by adopting a zoning change like this, so we can certainly, if it's something the council's inclined to do, we certainly can sort of work on between now and the final adoption of this matter and see what we can do. However, another option would be to approve this the way it is, and in the event that one of those uses comes forward in the future, then it can always come back to the council to address whatever might be needed to allow for that particular future use to be approved.
So if I understand you correctly, we could potentially approve the first reading with the caveat that you're going to work on.
If that's something the council likes to do, but in all likely, it's probably going to require another vehicle other than the ordinances that are in front of you tonight, so.
Okay. Are we thoroughly confused here in the council? All right. Mr. Gilbert.
Yeah, Mr. Porter, this land area, it's a Nova Road, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And then, there's a new high school being built by it, is that correct also?
From what I understand, the school district owns that property. I know they have plans for a bus depot, and I've heard of future plans for a high school in St. Cloud.
Right, so a bus depot will be right before the school, and then the school will be right there.
Yes, from the plans that I've seen, that appears to be the case.
Me too. Thank you, Mr. Porter.
Before we have more discussion by the council, would anyone else in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and/or action by council. Do we have any discussion? Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Gilbert for the approval of item 2022-49, and a second from Mr. Fletcher.
And as presented, as it was presented by staff.
As it was presented, or?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban. Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
Do I have a motion regarding item 2022-50?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Let me, did anyone, y'all just want to speak to this item? If not, please call the roll, please.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban. Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0.
Brings us to items four, five, and six. Madam Clerk, please read them into the record.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2023-10, an ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the city of St. Cloud approximately 29.48 acres identified as Omni-St. Cloud Clay Whaley, located east of Clay Whaley, west of Florida's Turnpike, and east of Stage Coach Road, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provision of Chapter 171.044 Florida statutes. First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2023-11, an ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of mixed use to approximately 29.48 acres identified as Omni-St. Cloud Clay Whaley, located south of Clay Whaley, west of Florida's Turnpike, and east of Stage Coach Road, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the planning commission, recommendation, and proof of publication, applicability, and effect, suborbidity, copies on files, and effective date. First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2023-12, an ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the Land Development Code of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately 29.48 acres identified as Omni-St. Cloud Clay Whaley, from mixed-use zoning designation county to mixed-use zoning designation city, with a mixed-use future land use designation adopted by ordinance number 2023-11, generally located south of Clay Whaley, west of Florida's Turnpike, and east of Stage Coach Road, providing for entering the designation of the official zoning map, filing of the planning commission, recommendation, and proof of publication, suborbidity, and effective date.
Good evening once again. Dagmar Estegara, Planning Manager. In front of you is the request for an annexation, a comprehensive plan amendment, and a zoning amendment for a property approximately 29.48 acres located in, as stated by the city clerk. The request is for the voluntary annexation and a comprehensive plan for mixed-use county to mixed-use city, and the zoning map amendment from a mixed-use county to the mixed-use city, and staff recommends approval. In regards to the annexation, the request meets the requirements of section, for the statute, Section 171, which is contiguous and reasonable compact and is adjacent to the city limits. Existing county future land use is mixed-use, and existing county zoning is mixed-use. The proposed future land use designation would also be mixed-use, and the proposed zoning designation would be mixed-use. The development is compatible with the surrounding areas, and there is no adverse impact on city's facilities. This is the location area of the property. As you recall, this is one of the properties that were recently, near recently annexed water property. This is just on the outside, but it's all part of that comprehensive plan of the East Lake Toho Lakes, also known as H-Water. The future land use designation, as you can see, is also surrounded by mixed-use by the county, and zoning mixed-use by the county as well, and it will be also mixed-use for the city. This is the location of where in the, on the overall master planning of the area, the location of the the area, the location of the property and it is, the request, it is compatible with the concept master plan for the East Lake Toho Lake. The project will be developed in a single-phase development, as stated by the applicant, with approximately 234 single-family attached apartments. It provides two full accesses into Clay, on Clay Whaley, which is currently under construction. Future connections will be offered on the east and west of the development to abiding properties as they keep developing. And with this annexation and future land use, the county, the city is also accepting the currently approved approvals of the concept plan CS 220002 and the preliminary subdivision PS 2200038. I would like to emphasize that these concept plans and preliminary subdivision plans are also in compliance with the master planning of the city, which we adopted with the East Lake Toho. It means a strategic goal of growth management. DRC or staff review the request and recommends approval and the Planning Commission on 22123 also recommended approval. It is requested with the city, city council to approve the annexation ordinance 2023-10, the comprehensive plan ordinance 2023-11, and the zoning map amendment 2023-12. The applicant is here to answer any questions and I'm also available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak to this, these items?
Good evening, Sean Hendel, Hanson-Waltz, Associates, 8 Broadway, Kissimmee, Florida. Just a couple of things of clarification. So in the, in the presentation, the original developer was Mill Creek Residential and they have backed out of the contract on the property. So the owner is moving forward with the annexation land use and zoning and then he has backup contracts on purchase of the land. And the presentation that was just provided called out for 238 units. Now, these units were two-story multifamily apartments. So under mixed-use development, just a little background, so mixed-use development, they create conceptual master plans. And that's just an overall plan of how they get the density and this is where they want the density within these areas. Under that conceptual master plan, you file a concept plan. And the concept plan is the specific things, unless you match the conceptual master plan exactly, it's the specific use that you want on the property. So she explained to you that the, the concept plan was already approved and would be brought over from the county. So this is an NH2 neighborhood, which is neighborhood two multifamily parcel. So under MXD, multifamily parcels are five to 25 dwellings per unit, or per acre. So between minimum of five, maximum of 25 per acre. The, the owner didn't want to mislead you that his backup contract is for a higher density than what was presented and what's in, at the city. So we've already submitted construction plans to the city for 200, it's 244 units, not 238, it was 244 units, and we've submitted those construction plans. If the owner goes with one of his three contracts, then that is going to go up, propose to go up to over 500 units on this property. So I didn't want to mislead anyone and tell you that you're looking at a two-story product and 238 because that developer's not here anymore. But the owner is still wants to be within the MXD, but he's potentially looking at much more units. So just wanted to make sure that the presentation and what may happen on this property, it may stay 244 units. He does have a, a backup that, that wants to do the same product, but again, I don't want you to be misled.
Hang on for a little bit, Mr. Menzares, you have any counsel on this?
Other than, it seems like this, what the information that was presented, this item might be premature for the council to consider at this point.
Sure seems that way. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to these items? If not, we'll have discussion in our motion by council.
Certainly could continue the items for a period of time to allow the owner of the property to finalize which direction he or she thinks they're going to move. Or you could just annex, you could do the annexation piece, of course, too.
Any opinion on the council?
I think it's-
Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you, I, I think it's premature to bring to the council.
I think so too, I would recommend denial personally. I'll make a motion for denial?
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Would you like to speak?
Please.
All right.
So, sorry, Melissa Dunkland, Community Development Director. So if we deny annexation, they can develop it in the county, it's contiguous to city limits and we have a joint planning agreement with Osceola County that says whenever they are ready to develop, they need to come to the city. Right now, approving the annexation, future land use and zoning, all you're doing is annexing them and assigning them a mixed-use land use and a mixed-use zoning, you're not approving any development at this time.
Mr. Hendel, would you like to speak to that?
Under the JPA, you're accepting the PS and the concept plan. So you're accepting NH2, which is on the property for five to 25 units per acre as a straight zone. So MXD, we will have the right to ask for that. It's not a public hearing to, to ask for a straight zoning density. So, so it would be if, if you want to annex it, it's great.
Annex.
If you don't want to annex it, it's, it's, it's more difficult because the contracts were contingent on annexation. So, so I knew the one, and I apologize, I just found this out today at lunchtime at 1:30. So at 1:30, we had this discussion and he presented a developer that came to me and, and they asked, what do we have to do to do this? And I didn't have the answer for him. I was like, well, I know it's tonight and I asked the owner, Zach, if I could disclose that to you and when I saw it on the presentation, I didn't have a choice, but he said yes, he wanted to be honest with you. So you're looking at an NH2 development because that goes with the annexation, it's already approved at the county. So you already have neighborhood two and you already have five to 25 units per acre.
Okay, Mr. Menzares?
And so I think with that being said, and again, I apologize, this is, we're having pretty quick. I think the, maybe the appropriate thing is to do, is complete the annexation and then hold off on the rest of the items until there's a little bit more information.
Okay. Well, I'll sort of withdraw my other motion then?
Yes, and one more thing that I would like to specify is any changes that they make to the preliminary subdivision plan or the concept plan that's already approved by the county will have to come back to city council for approval.
Yeah, but I, I think the point is the council would like the, the little bit more information about what actually the plan is. If you just do the annexation, then you'd have that opportunity when the other items have to be addressed.
What's the pleasure of the council? Will I make a motion for the annexation then? The approval of the first item? I have a second from Councilmember Fletcher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll for the approval of item 2023-10.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban? Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
All right, Mr. Menzares, could you give us a little more counsel on these next two items?
Well, I think, I think the, the next step would be to either, either continue them or to ask the applicant if they want to withdraw and refollow them at a later date and just proceed on the annexation. If you want to continue it, that would be fine, you just probably want to continue it for, you know, probably maybe until May.
Yes, as far as the, I mean, either way, it's going to be MXD because it's MXD in the county. So continuing or approving or denying, it's, it's what the county zoning and land use is. And this is in the mixed-use area. For this, it's East Lake Toho mixed-use area. One of the, the things that we talked about with staff just a second ago is the concept plan isn't changing, it's NH2. So there's no revision to that concept plan, it's approved. The preliminary plat, which we had at the county, now as a, as a, if it becomes a four-story product, it's one parcel. So it's one parcel and it doesn't have a plat associated with it. There are two rightaways that will be building, two framework roads on the north and west side of the property. But as far as the, the preliminary plat for the site, it's going to be one parcel. So there's not going to be a revision to the concept plan and there's not going to be a preliminary plat. So we'll go hopefully from here, you tell me what we have to do.
So, sorry, another point of clarification.
Show your name for the record, please.
Melissa Dunkland, Community Development Director. If they change their development program on their concept plan, it will be a concept plan revision and we will bring that back to city council.
So what are you recommending? Continuance?
We, no, we recommend approval of the land use and zoning because the development program is, if it changes, we will review it and bring it back to council. Otherwise, because of our JPA, we'll accept it as approved in the county and they can move forward with the development.
Okay.
But we've already, we've already hashed all that out when we did the Edgewater annexation agreement.
All right. So what's the pleasure of the council regarding ordinance number 2023-11?
And just as one reminder, this is first reading, so we could maybe get some more, I think, our position, our recommendation was based on this last-minute information and, and making sure the council understood what was going on because it seems to be, so if, we can certainly clarify all that by the, by final adoption. If the council's not comfortable then, then you could address the continuance at that point if you wanted. So with that, I, with that, just and, and Ms. Duncan's comments, I would recommend that you just move forward with the first readings for both of those items and we can address it at final adoption.
Could I entertain a motion for the adoption of the first reading? Of 2023-11? Do I have a motion? I'm going to make a motion for the adoption of the future land use 2023-11. Do I have a second? If not, it dies for lack of a second. So it's rejected. Does it need to go on to the next one, is there not?
Not in this case, well, there is, well, no, not in this case, for the record if you want to, but it's not, you can't, you know, the second one, the third one follows the second one, so.
Yeah.
So.
What is the pleasure regarding item number 2023-12? Do I have a motion for its adoption? If not, it dies for lack of a motion.
And so with that, I think you can move forward with the annexation and then maybe the, the, the application could be repurposed and brought back, you know, to later dates if it's a little clearer.
Brings us to items seven, eight, and nine, Madam Clerk?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2023-13, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the City of St. Cloud, approximately 0.94 acres identified as Tohoku mixed-use development, located south of Neptune Road, east of Breeze Wood Street, north of Cross Prairie Parkway, and west of Tohoku Boulevard, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provision of Chapter 171.044 Florida statutes. First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2023-14, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of mixed-use to approximately 0.94 acres identified as Tohoku mixed-use development, located south of Neptune Road, east of Breeze Wood Street, north of Cross Prairie Parkway, and west of Tohoku Boulevard, providing for amending of the future, of the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, applicability and effect, severabilities, copies on files, and effective date. First reading and introduction of ordinance number 2023-15, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning map amendment of the land development code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately 0.94 acres identified as Tohoku mixed-use development, from mixed-use zoning designation county to a mixed-use zoning designation city with a mixed-use future land use designation adopted by ordinance number 2023-42, generally located south of Neptune Road, east of Breeze Wood Street, north of Cross Prairie Parkway, and west of Tohoku Boulevard, providing for entering the designation of the official zoning map filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, severability, and effective date.
Good evening, Dagmarie Segarra, Planning Manager. In front of you is the annexation, complete amendment, and zoning amendment for a property that is approximately .94 acres located as stated by the city clerk. It is a voluntary annexation and staff recommends approval. So this is in regards to the annexation, it meets the requirements of sections, further statute, Section 171, which is contiguous and reasonable compact, is adjacent to city limits, the existing county future land use is mixed-use and the existing county zoning is mixed-use. The proposed future land use designation is mixed-use and the proposed zoning designation is also mixed-use. The development is compatible with the surrounding areas and there is no adverse impact on the city's facilities. This is the location of the area where the property, to be honest, is at. This is all part of the Tohoku master plan that is already under construction. These are little enclaves that are within that master plan that were just, you know, as they're getting acquired, we annex them and make them part of that concept plan, which at the end is all going to be part of their future center. I forgot the name, it's, it's, Community Center, sorry, Community Center. As you can see in the future land use designation, it is surrounded by mixed-use future land use and the zoning designation is surrounded by mixed zoning, mixed-use. It means the strategic growth, strategic plan goal of growth management. DRC reviewed this application and recommends approval and the Planning Commission also recommended approval on February 21st. It is the request of staff for city council to approve the annexation, annexation ordinance 2023-13, comprehensive plan amendment ordinance 2023-14, and zoning map amendment 2023-15. The applicant is here to answer any questions and I'm also available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak to this item?
Good evening, Joe Thacker, 17, South Orlando Avenue, Kissimmee. We agree with everything staff has presented and I'm here to answer any questions you may have, as well as the representatives from Paulson Bennett also present.
Thank you, Ms. Thacker. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item, these items? If not, we'll have discussion in our motion by council.
Motion for approval?
Second.
Okay, first of all, we have a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 2023-13. We have a motion from-
Fletcher.
Councilmember Fletcher, second, Councilmember Matheny, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban? Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
And Mr. Mayor, since it's a little different from your normal course, you'll notice that that first reading, the final hearing will be on April 13th.
Okay. So for the record, the final hearing will be on April 13th, 2023.
Yes, sir.
Item number, ordinance number 2023-14, do I have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gilbert, second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Fletcher, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban? Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
The mayor makes a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 2023-15, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Fletcher, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban? Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Madam Clerk, could you read items 10 and 11 into the record?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2023-16, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation, private institutional, to approximately 0.82 acres identified as St. Cloud I Center, located south of 17th Street, east of Buddinger Avenue, west of Longleaf Drive, north of Shelby Ruth Place, providing for amending the future, the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, applicability and effect, severability, copies on file, and effective date. First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2023-17, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation- specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately 0.82 acres identified as St. Cloud Eye Center from R dash three multifamily dwelling to a P professional zoning designation with a private institutional future land use designation adopted by ordinance number 2023 dash 16, generally located south of 17th Street, east of Budinger Avenue, west of Longleaf Drive, and north of Shelby, Ruth Place, providing for entering the designation of the official zoning map filing of the Planning Commission, recommendation and proof of publication, suborability, and effective date.
Good evening, for the record, Dagmarie Segarra, Planning Manager. So this request in front of you is for a comprehensive plan amendment and a zoning amendment for a property that is approximately 0.82 acres and located as stated by the city clerk. Staff review the application and recommends approval of the comprehensive plan and the zoning. The proposed future land use, uh, it is a private institutional and the current future land use is medium density residential. The proposed zoning, it will be professional with an office and the current zoning is R3 multifamily dwelling district. The development is compatible with the surrounding areas and the facilities have no adverse impacts unto the city's facilities. As you can see, there's, in the future land use designation, the property is surrounded by also professional, um, um, professional, or is, I can't talk right now, sorry. Professional or institutional future land use designation, which across the street is from the, our hospital and this facility is going to operate also as a, as a part of the hospital as a medical eye office. And the zoning designation is compatible with the area of the hospital as well across the street. It meets such strategic goals of growth management, economic development, and professional workforce. The, uh, staff reviewed this application and recommended approval and the Planning Commission also recommended approval in February 21st, 2023. It is requested of the City Council to approve the requested comprehensive plan amendment ordinance 2023 dash 16 and the zoning map amendment 20, uh, ordinance number 2023-17. The applicant is here to answer any questions and I'll be also here, I'm also here to answer any questions as well.
Okay. Would the applicant like to speak to this item?
Mayor and council members, good evening. Um, Mike LaRosa, LaRosa Development, 1420 Celebration Boulevard, second floor. I think your staff did a great job explaining what the, uh, the idea and concept is. So happy to answer any questions or clarifications.
Thank you very much. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Good to see you, by the way. It's been a while. If not, we'll have discussion and a motion by council. What's the pleasure of the council regarding item number 2023 dash 16?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, second, Councilmember Fletcher, Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Urban. Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Do I have a motion regarding item, uh, ordinance number 2023 dash 17?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Gilbert. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban. Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. And it's approved. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number 12 into the record?
Resolution number 2023 dash zero 16R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending resolution number 2022 dash 188R, which adopted the fiscal year 2022 dash 2023 budget for the City of St. Cloud, finding the city manager has certified there are prior year funds, balances, and/or current revenues available in the budget for additional projects and programs and various funds not included in the original budget, requiring the budget to be increased to include said additional fundings in the various funds and making supplemental appropriations within the funds.
Jeff Cooper, Interim Finance Director. Uh, this is budget amendment two, uh, resolution 2023 dash zero one six R and this is amending the FY 2022, 2023 budget. Uh, background, as per city code, section two dash two one two amendments after adoption. If during the fiscal year, the manager certifies that there are available for appropriation revenues in excess of those estimated in the budget, the City Council may by resolution make supplemental appropriation for the year up to the amount of each excess. The city manager has certified funds are available to appropriate funds. This budget amendment meets the city's strategic plan goal for financial sustainability. Uh, for the general fund, it is a 1,059,366 dollar increase. We're increasing revenues from prior year fund balance by 1,018,980 dollars and federal grants, public safety by 40,386. On the expenditures side, we're increasing inter-fund transfer expenditures by 1,018,980. This is to transfer funding to Fund 460, the building permit fund for the general fund portion of the new City Hall atrium. Uh, that's for the first floor. It's 27.54% of the total building and per auditor's recommendation, the building fund should not pay for the portion of the building not specifically occupied by building permit fund staff. Uh, we'll get to more details on that when we get to Fund 460. Uh, increased expenditures for the fire department training, uh, grant funded by 33,844 for at the point of the spear training course. Uh, this is the 2022 Assistance to Firefighters Grant and increased expenditures for the Police Department Machinery and Equipment Grant funded by 6,542 for the DOJ Grant for Active Shooter Response Equipment. Any questions on the general fund? Or we can wait till the end? General fund not done. Uh, decrease community development salary and benefit expenditures by 82,116 dollars and increase expenditures for inter-fund transfer expenditures by the same amount to provide funding for Fund 630 Economic Development for the newly established Community Development Block Grant Manager Position? Okay, the Capital Projects Fund, we're increasing that by 1,370,927 dollars. Uh, we're increasing revenues from intragovernmental transfers by that amount and increase in expenditures for the following projects. Project ST 2307, 17th Street Extension. We're adding 100,000 dollars for additional design cost. Project ST 2309, US 192 pedestrian signals upgrade, 223,648. This is for signals at Indiana Avenue and Florida Avenue. This is a new project. Project PR 2201, the ranch renovations, increase of 365,000. This is an ongoing project. Uh, we have some needs for fire protection improvements, life safety issues, and the payment of impact fees. Project PR 2004, Florida Avenue renovations, an increase of 682,279 dollars for additional construction costs. Any questions on the projects? Parks Impact Fee Fund, there's a zero increase.
Could you stop just a second? Councilmember Matheny would like to ask a question.
Hi. I, I have a question on the ranch renovations, 365 for fire protection. Is that also putting the bathrooms on potable water or that's just fire suppression?
Uh, I, I'm not sure if Ms. Holtkamp is still here. Earlier this week, she told me that she had reached out to Toho, but she hadn't been able to work through those details yet. So for the rest of council, I don't know if you've been at the ranch lately, beautiful facility. The bathrooms smell really bad with the sulfur water, so I've asked if we can try to find a way to get the bathrooms on. It is potable water.
It, it is in the plan to eventually connect a potable, but they were moving forward with a water softener and I asked her if she could work with Toho to see if we could skip replacing the water softener and go directly to the connection. But she's not here to confirm.
I was just wondering if that included it, so.
I do not believe so.
Right.
That's, that's not specifically included with this item.
Do you have anything else?
Okay. Parks Impact Fee Fund, there's a zero dollar increase. We're decreasing budgeted contingency expenditures by 365,000 and increasing intragovernmental transfers by 365,000 for the aforementioned project, PR 2201, the ranch renovations for the fire protection improvements, life safety issues, and impact fees. Mobility Fee Fund, also a zero dollar increase. We're decreasing contingency expenditures previously budgeted by a million 5,927 dollars and increase intragovernmental transfers by the same amount to fund projects. ST 2309, the US 192 pedestrian signal upgrades, 223,648. ST 2307, 17th Street Extension, 100,000 dollars for the additional design costs and Project PR 2004, Florida Avenue renovations for 682,279 dollars for additional, uh, construction costs. The building fund, uh, we are doing this as a zero increase. We're increasing intragovernmental transfer revenue by 1,018,980, the funding coming from the general fund to account for the transfer from the general fund for its portion of the City Hall atrium. And we're decreasing building permit revenue previously budgeted by the same amount to account for the decrease in building activity for this fiscal year. We originally budgeted approximately 4 million dollars and we're well under that pace thus far. It's slightly improved, but um, rather than adding money to the building fund budget, we just adjusted the revenues down because it's not gonna meet that 4 million dollar mark. Any questions on that? Self-insurance Health Fund, 700,000 dollar increase. We're increasing revenue from inter-fund transfer by 700,000 and increased contingency expenditures by 700,000. This is to establish contingency funding transferred from the Self-Insurance Workers' Comp Fund. This is required by the actuary since we're self-insured, we have to keep, uh, I think they requested 682,000 as contingency, which they equate to two months' worth of claims. Um, so we're, we're transferring money from the, our self-insured Workman's Comp Fund to the Self-Insurance Health Fund, which that is next. The Self-Insurance Workman's Comp Fund, 700,000 dollar increase. We're increasing revenue from prior year fund balance by 700,000 and increase inter-fund transfer expenditures by 700,000 to transfer excess funding to the Self-Insurance Health Fund. Uh, we have a large, um, balance in the Self-Insurance Workman's Comp Fund of over a million dollars, so this still leaves us with well over half a million dollars and we have had fairly good claim history in the three years that I've been here. Economic Development Fund, eight, 82,116 dollar increase. This is the other side of the transfer from the general fund. Increase revenue from inter-fund transfer by that amount and increase expenditures for salary and benefits by the same amount for the new Community Development Block Grant Program Manager Position that we're trying to hire. Staff recommendation is approval of resolution 2023 dash zero one six R and City Council requested action is approval of resolution number 2023 dash zero one six R. Any questions?
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this request for a budget amendment? If not, we'll have discussion and a motion by council.
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, second.
Second.
Mayor Blackwell.
Oops, sorry, sorry, Mayor.
Too slow, man.
Sorry.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban. Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Brings us to item number 13.
Resolution number 2023 dash zero five zero R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, granting a conditional use for multifamily residential in the HB Highway Business Zoning District on the northern 25.23 acres portion of the 41.41 acres parcel of land generally located north of Earlville Bronson Memorial Highway, south of Lilian Lee, east of Narcousie Road, and west of Nora Tyson, as described in the body of this resolution.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Melissa Duncan, Community Development Director. The request before you tonight is for the Hathaway Multifamily Conditional Use Amendment. Back in September, the City Council approved, actually it wasn't the City Council. City Council approved resolution 2022 dash one eight four R for the conditional use for multifamily residential in this highway business zoning district. On the previous conditional use approval, there was, there were 11 conditions added. Condition number nine is the only condition that is in question tonight and as of right now, it reads, prior to the issuance of development permits on site, the applicant is required to make improvements to Puffin Road to current standards connecting Lilian Lee Road to US Highway 192. To accomplish this, the applicant must coordinate with Osceola County and obtain the necessary permits through the county for any improvements required within the county jurisdiction. On February 19th, 2023, staff received a request to revise that condition and staff did review this request and at this time, we do not support the request to change the condition. However, if City Council does choose to approve this request, staff is recommending that we amend the language to the following. We've separated it into four sections, um, so it's gonna be pretty lengthy for me to read, but I'll, I'll go ahead and read it for the record. Um, Puffin Road will be constructed by the applicant to city standards as a local road from the northern property boundary of the project to US 192 with the typical section as attached in Exhibit C and with any turn lane or operational improvements demonstrated as necessary by the transportation impact analysis subject to approval by Osceola County. Part B, Puffin Road will be constructed by the applicant to city standards with the transitional section from the northern property boundary of the project north to Star Ruby Avenue with the typical section including tying in the sidewalk connection to the existing sidewalk system as attached in Exhibit C, subject to approval by Osceola County. Part C, sidewalk and curb improvements will be completed by the applicant on the segment of Puffin Road that is between Star Ruby Avenue and Lilian Lee Road as attached in Exhibit D, subject to approval by Osceola County. And part D, in the event that the necessary right of way is obtained by the city or the county within two years of the date hereof, Puffin Road will be constructed by the applicant to city or county standards, sorry, county, urban, local road standards with a transitional section from the northern property boundary of the project to Lilian Lee Road. This request meets the strategic plan goal for growth management. As I stated before, staff does recommend denial, however. Um, should City Council approve this request, we, uh, recommend that you approve it in accordance with the revised language that's provided by staff for condition number nine. And with that, staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Would the applicant like to speak to this item?
Joe Thacker, 17, South Orlando Avenue, Kissimmee, representing the applicant. Thank you for considering this only condition number nine. And if we can go back to the original condition, um, there were many interpretations as to what this condition actually meant. Um, there was discussion at the previous City Council about whether there was adequate right of way or not. Um, so after this was approved, the applicant got together with staff and said, what do you think it means? We think it means this. And there was back and forth as far as, um, listening to the audio tape and understanding where everybody was. So after several meetings, uh, lengthy meetings with staff, uh, there was a game plan put in place that, um, staff would consider an, uh, conditional use application that dealt, just dealt with condition number nine. So that application was made. All along, the understanding from this developer was that there would be a staff recommendation of approval. Um, and in fact, the staff did recommend. And in fact, the staff did recommend approval, and I have a letter that stated they recommended approval. But then somehow it got changed between the time I received the first letter where staff recommended approval, and then the agenda that went out. So this is the, the letter that I got that said staff recommended approval as to, with the conditions. And then when you all received it, somehow it got changed to a denial. I'm not sure how that happened. And I was not given any heads up about it either, so I was a little bit disappointed in that. But regardless, here we are tonight to try to get through this. And what I would do is, I know that the condition that's before you tonight says that they will do a transitional section to Star Ruby. What I would like to do is read into the record that Puffin Road will be constructed by applicant to city standards with the transitional section from the northern property boundary of the project north to the northern line of Track P adjacent to Puffin Road with the typical section including tying in the sidewalk connection to the existing sidewalk system as attached in Exhibit C, which would be amended to show that typical section up to that northern boundary line of Track P. Further, that the nine C would be changed to also state that the transitional section would go to Track B, and then the sidewalk and curb and gutter would go to, would start at the northern edge of Track P to Lilian Lee. So wanted to put that on the record from the very beginning, that they have no problem doing that. Further, if there is a desire to extend the number of years to three, the applicant does not have any problem with that at all, and would be happy to, to do that. This goes back to obtaining right-of-way that's off-site. The applicant's giving right-of-way in their adjacent, within their property boundary, but this is right-of-way that's not there for the northern section of Puffin Road to Lilian Lee. And it's actually a county right-of-way. It's not a city right-of-way. So making an applicant go and get right-of-way that's off-site is nowhere in the city's land development code. And in fact, your comprehensive plan actually states in Policy one point two point five, pursue a transportation interlocal agreement with Osceola County to ensure that adequate right-of-way will be available for future roadway network. So it's clear in your future land use element that the onus is on the city and the county to figure out the transportation network system that's going to work for future development. You have mobility fees in place. Your ordinance is there to be able to say, "Hey, we want these roads in place. Let's go get the right-of-way we need." So when a developer comes in, they can build the road, even the off-site road that's really not their responsibility to build, but this developer is happy to do that, wants to be a good community partner, and is hopeful that we can move forward and figure out how to make this work for both the city and the applicant. I do have Mr. Hindle here, as well as a transportation consultant, as well as the seller of the property. And I am happy to answer any questions that you all may have or provide any additional information you may want.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to receive public comment at this point, if you'll stand by.
Yes, sir.
Chrissy, and you'll come for that after the last name, I never get it right, so.
Hello. My name is Chrissy Malukowitz, and I'm at eighteen-twenty Puffin Road, St. Cloud, Florida. As a resident of Puffin Road, the revisions to condition number nine, A through D, are acceptable, in my opinion. However, if this is approved, I am requesting two additional special conditions be considered and included. Number one, installation of an emergency access gate on Puffin Road at the Track P boundary to prevent traffic from utilizing Puffin Road to Lilian Lee until all of that road and right-aways are completed to a standard road. I'm requesting this condition because from Track P to Lilian Lee is one road, one lane currently, and it's as-is. There's no way two cars can get down that road. And then the emerg, sorry, as, as an emergency access gate would prevent vehicles from making a left-hand turn outside of that apartment community. So coming outside the apartment community, cars could only make a right onto one ninety-two. Once Puffin Road is improved from Track P to Lilian Lee, the emergency access gate could then be removed. Number two, all construction vehicles only utilize Highway one ninety-two for ingress and egress to the construction site. Failure to do so would result in fines to the developer and/or the construction company assigned to the project. If this is in agreeance to the City Council, I would ask that you please add these two special conditions into your motion to approve. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Dampke, Betty Dampke?
Good evening, everyone. Betty Dampke, forty-seven, seventy-six, in Heights Trail, St. Cloud. I completely agree with what Chrissy just said. We have discussed this, we've looked at it, and we today saw these new A through D, and we completely agree with that. And the special conditions, please, if you make a motion to approve, be sure to add those two for the emergency gate and for the highway construction entrance from one ninety-two. Other than that, we're good to go as residents out there.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Ms. Sackler, would you like to readdress?
The applicant will agree to those two additional conditions.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion under a motion by council at this point. What is the pleasure of the council? We don't know what our pleasure is. Ms. Dunklin, do you have something?
Yes, we just wanted to confirm that council acknowledged Ms. Thacker's amendment to the condition regarding the improvement of the roadway to Track P, the northern boundary adjacent to the Puffin Road right-of-way, and not just to the track itself. And I think the condition for gating off Puffin Road needs to be considered and possibly discussed because there are other driveways off of Puffin Road, and if we put an emergency access gate there, I don't know how the people, other people will access their homes further down on Puffin Road and where that gate would be placed, and if the emergency management team would be okay with that.
All right.
So really, to clarify, essentially what they're asking for is the road to be blocked with the exception of emergency access.
Councilmember Matheny?
Is there a map? I mean, can someone put a map up and?
Maybe.
Yeah.
I have lots of papers. I think what she was asking for is the emergency gate right at the northern edge of Track P. So they would, the emergency gate would be right there. You're still going to have a, well, a sidewalk and a curb and gutter if the road is not improved. So you'd still have pedestrian access if you didn't, if the vehicular access is cut off. There it is. So Track P is the rectangular, the most southern rectangular box. So can you point? Okay, so it's at the?
Right there.
So I think there are only two, or? Yeah, I don't know where you want it.
Can you go up a little bit? No, no, the other, other direction, other direction, and to the left. Do you see, there's, there's the one driveway right there? Do you see the stub, no, that's one driveway right there. But that's next to Track P. This has been right next to Star Ruby. That's where if we could put then the gate, gated access entry right there so that someone could still get into their driveway.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
My concern with that is it would block access to Star Ruby Avenue as well, which is an improved public right-of-way. And I don't know those other two driveways, what, what they are. Looks like there's another home down there. So I think we should consider that as well.
I believe they have applications into the city for a development subdivision. No? I'm, I'm sorry.
Mr. Hindle, you have something for us? You're like you're dying to say something. You going to clear this all up?
No, actually, I'm a little confused. So the, the development for the Exchange Department, Hathaway, is building the road all the way up to Track P as a transitional section, and then we're going to block it off from being used by the public? So if we're blocking it off emergency access, if we build to where it's paved and block it off emergency access, it's, I don't understand why we're building the road all the way up if, if it's going to be blocked off at this point. There's adjacent properties, when they develop, they'll build the road. If Canopy Walk, when it developed in the city, I think it was in the city, maybe the county, but under your code, you're supposed to build the roads adjacent to you. And Lilian Lee, Nora Tyson, nor Puffin Road, which all have access to Canopy Walk, they didn't build any other roads. So it's neither here nor there, but if we're going to block the road off, then why don't we just block it off at our northern boundary if that's to do with the council? But I think what the goal was for the city was to increase the ability for people to get to one ninety-two to a potentially signalized intersection in, in that roadway. There is seventeen and a half feet of right-of-way adjacent to Ms. Malukowitz's property. The existing pavement is about nine feet away. So if you'd rather have additional pavement in that section instead of a sidewalk along that side, I could widen the road and make it a full width road as another transitional section. Or if there is a development project pending on that other property, which a developer from Canada purchased that land, then I would say that that obligation would become their obligation when they develop their property. So I'm just a little confused of, we want to build the road as a, as a transitional section all the way up to a point, but then we're blocking it off so it can't be used. I'm not understanding that. So again, my client, my attorney said that we'll accept the condition, but I just, I just want to understand what the goal of the city is. If it's to allow traffic to go through there, then, then, you know, we can look at the transition and the additional right-of-way, maybe trade off the sidewalk for better pavement until that right-of-way is dedicated. If, if, you know, the property owners are concerned with the width of that pavement, and they want to sell or dedicate right-of-way along there, then, then, you know, we would work with them to, to try to, to provide the right-of-way adjacent to them now so we could actually build the road. And I just want to go back to the original condition, and, and I know it sounds confusing that we submitted construction plans, and we had a different understanding than, than staff did. So we were to understand that we coordinate with Osceola County, and we build a standard road, which is a curb and gutter road. We have several other projects in the city that we have the same situation where we had substandard right-of-way, but they wanted a standard urban road. So we gave them a section, actually, the county gives us a section that says, "Build this and that existing," Nora Tyson Road is a thirty-five-foot right-of-way. And we're building a curb and gutter, twenty-four-foot road, in the thirty-five feet. And that's what we understood the comment meant, is build the road in the right-of-way that's there. So we didn't mean to create any issues with how this comment is interpreted. It was just, we met with staff, and, and they took it as the standard, as being the city standard for a fifty-foot right-of-way, and we don't have the ability to condemn property. So that's where we were like, we didn't understand. And then it didn't meet your conference of plan, and we're like, "I'm still not understanding what, what you're asking us to do." So that's why we came back to you.
Mr. Benzeris? Do you understand?
Well, I was going to ask Ms. Thacker, what, she stood up and told us her client was okay with this, so.
So if you all want an emergency gate up, my client will agree to it. I mean, and they'll pay for it. If you don't, we won't. But what we're trying to do is show how we're trying to work with the city, with the residents, you know, doing everything that's in our power to be able to perform. What we can't perform is getting the right-of-way.
Got you.
Thank you.
And the other, I think the key request from the neighbor was that that restricted access would only be for that time that the road was not fully constructed moving forward. So it'd only, the, the, the plan would be, it would essentially be temporary. So it, and it is unusual for roads to be built in the advance of other roads being built, even though they're not being used until in the future.
Chief Miller?
Chief Miller, Fire Chief, City of St. Cloud. I would not be in favor of blocking off access for emergency vehicles. It just doesn't sit well. I mean, there's, yes, there's ways around it, but that's going to prolong response times. If for some reason something happens to the road, we have to go around now, we have to get out of the truck, we have to unlock the gate. It's just not a good idea. Just leave it at that.
I would agree with that. Mr. Benzeris, your light is still on?
Sorry, sir.
Ms. Thacker, do you have anything else to add?
I do not have anything else. I think Ms. Dampke wanted me to state that what they're requesting really is that the traffic from the apartments only go to one ninety-two instead of going north on Puffin until such time as the full right-of-way is completed.
That was just a statement, or you're agreeing to it?
That was a statement.
Thank you. Mr. Fletcher?
With that, all that, I've met with the applicants, residents in the area, and the seller, and everybody else. I would make a motion for approval, adding the conditions that construction vehicles use access or access the property from one ninety-two. Any roadway improvements to Puffin Road extend from one ninety-two to the northernmost point of Track P. I believe that's already been stated. And then, condition D in the staff report to be revised to three years instead of two, and then also to direct staff to look at possibly purchasing the property on the corner of Lilian Lee and Puffin, as it's, I believe, already for sale, and that would assist in getting us the right-of-way that we need to complete the improvements on Lilian Lee and Puffin.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with conditions from Councilmember Fletcher with a second from Councilmember Gilbert. Are we clear with what we're voting on? Are you clear? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Matheny? No. Deputy Mayor Urban? Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
A reluctant I.
Motion carries three, one.
Thank you. Brings us to council action. Item number one, Madam Clerk.
Resolution number 2023 dash zero twenty-eight R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, authorizing the city manager to enter into a task authorization to the agreement for construction manager at RIS services for projects less than four million in value with Quinn Commercial, Inc., for Allen C. McAllister Fire Training Center, establishing a guaranteed maximum price, authorizing the city manager to, to approve, change orders without increasing the approval budget and providing an effective date.
Chief?
Good evening, Jason Miller, Fire Chief. Forgive me, I'm not gonna be able to work the clicker, somebody else is gonna have to tonight. This is a request for the City Council to approve a task authorization for construction of the Allen C. McAllister Fire Training Building. Um, the center is the St. Cloud Fire Rescue Training Facility. I wanna clarify that for the record. Um, again, that's St. Cloud Fire Rescue Training Facility. The building itself will be hopefully named after one of our previous, um, training officers who has since passed away from cancer. He was our first training officer here in St. Cloud. Long story short, getting to the point here, um, three point seven zero two six hundred and three dollars for our fire training building, which was awarded to Quinn Contracting. A representative of Quinn is here, if you have any questions as far as that goes. This building currently meets the architectural standards. Mr. Tomek and planning and zoning worked diligently on that to bring it up to that standard. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Is there one in the audience that'd like to speak to this item? Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Um, I would like to thank the Fire Chief for, uh, working with me on the architectural standards. Since we're pushing the architectural standards in the City of St. Cloud, I thought it was very important that we met our own standards. So, um, it was a little confusing back and forth, but I think it did and then things got value, I don't know. But now we are sure we're on track. Um, the only thing I wanted to ask council was, um, there was another value engineering, um, decision that was made where the, like, brick was only on the two sides of the building and then two sides of the building it has fake brick that's like stucco that they draw the lines in, you know, to save some money on that. It's forty-five thousand, I think it was, additional to do. And personally, I'm of the opinion we oughta brick all four sides, like, I mean, at that point, I, I don't really like having faux brick on some, I have faux brick on an old house of mine and it's obvious it's faux brick, but unless you squint at it from like two hundred feet away. But, um, I mean, I don't know if anybody else has, uh, comments or the public, but I would make a motion to approve with the brick on all four sides.
I'd just like to point one thing out, this line, I didn't win the budget.
Hang on a second.
I'm sorry.
You have a motion on?
We have a motion, Councilmember Matheny, with the condition that bricks be all the way around. Do I have a second?
Can I, I wanna hear what he has to say.
Just do a second for discussion.
I gotta have a second for the court.
Second.
Second for Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you.
Now you may speak.
Very good, thank you. I have no issues with that, obviously. Uh, my only concern with that whole being the project, we'll need to submit a little bit of additional funding. Uh, we're approaching the point of, um, the money that was left in that project was for the furnishings of the building as well as the impact fees. These additional changes that we have made have eaten into that level a little bit, so you may in the future see a request for a budget amendment to replenish some of those funds. Just wanna give you the heads up of that ahead of time.
So where would that money come from? His manager?
Well, we'll have to do a budget amendment coming forward, potentially council contingency.
Okay.
But there is money in the city council's professional services budget of, that could cover it also. It would have to be transferred.
I, I just wanted to be forefront with you guys that...
I understand.
We're running tight on that.
I appreciate the fact you've been trying to save money. Certainly something we should always be trying to do. Do you have a discussion, my counsel, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Urban? Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four, zero.
And I thank you very much.
Thank you. Hope your hand heals up. Forgot where I was here, give me a second. Brings us to the next item on the council action item number two, I believe, is that correct?
Yes.
Madam Clerk?
Resolution number 2023 dash zero thirty-five R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, authorizing the city manager to execute the locally funded agreement between the State of Florida Department of Transportation and the City of St. Cloud and providing an effective date.
Good evening, Kevin Felbinger, Public Works Director. Last month, we brought forward, uh, the dedication for right of way for this project. Um, and this is just coming forward to be able to upgrade the existing, uh, signals for th- this project, um, at the intersections of Indiana and Florida Avenue. As, as we talked about before, this is the pedestrian project that 192, that is being proposed along 192, uh, to be allowed for safe pedestrian crossing across there. The reason why this is being brought forward is, uh, we requested that the, uh, the standard FDOT span wires are being upgraded to mast arms. Um, those are pretty much what we have going down, down through there, and so the additional cost, the DOT is asking for us to reimburse them. Um, with that, like I said, we're recommending approval of this project.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion, most of my counsel, Councilmember Fletcher, your light is on? Your light is not on. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you, um, uh, thank you. I know that this is standard practice of FDOT, it's always the span wires and, um, as you all know, when a hurricane comes through, what's a hit in the ground is the span wires. So, thank you for, um, asking for the upgrade, I really appreciate it, and I'll make a motion for approval.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny for approval. Have a second from the mayor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban? Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four, zero.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, read item number three.
Resolution number 2023 dash zero fifty-nine R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, authorizing the city manager to enter into a task authorization to the contract and agreement for continuing professional civil engineering services with Wright Pierce, Inc., dated January fifth, twenty twenty-three, for design services for the Seventeenth Street roadway extension, City of St. Cloud, Florida, and any amendments thereto, and providing an effective date.
Good evening, Kevin Felbinger, Public Works Director. Uh, this is for the, uh, design for the, uh, the roadway between Seventeenth Street between Crawford Avenue and Old Hickory Tree. The reason why it's being brought forward at this area there is because we, uh, earlier tonight, we approved the budget, but the budget amendment, uh, being able to have for additional funds to be able to afford this. This will be a two-lane, uh, section with intersection improvements and all the stormwater infrastructure required as part of this, uh, project. Staff does recommend approval.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion, motion by counsel, Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. So I would like to give kudos to myself and the mayor for this item because, if you recall, when we first got on council, I fought for this connection when the development was happening to preserve the right of way and we had several council members at the time who fought against it and said we didn't need it. So I said, we fought for connectivity and we got it, so it's great to see the project come through.
Would there be any other discussion? Could I entertain a motion? I'll make a motion for the adoption of resolution number twenty twenty-three dash oh fifty-nine R. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second for Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny? Deputy Mayor Urban? Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Felbinger. Item number four, clerk? Madam Clerk?
Discussion and possible action regarding the request for a reduction of lien for code enforcement case number two thousand thirteen dash nineteen forty-three. The property address for this case is eighteen twenty-two Ferris Court, St. Cloud, Florida.
Mr. Ranzares?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in front of you is this, uh, another code enforcement lien reduction request. This one has to do with a fine that has accrued two hundred and forty-nine thousand six hundred dollars. Uh, the prop, the original violation involved the construction of buildings at, on Ferris Court without appropriate permits. Ultimately, the property was brought into compliance, uh, the, uh, and the, we were contacted by an attorney for the property owner who asked, who inquired about moving forward, the deduction of lien, and we worked with, with that attorney and subject to the city manager's, um, recommended approval, we come up with a settlement amount of twenty thousand dollars where the, the property owner would pay that and, and for equal installments of five thousand dollars. In your packet is the, uh, order recommending, um, uh, reduction of fines signed by the special magistrate, uh, as well as the agreement from, um, Mrs. Miller, and then also, uh, a memo from the code enforcement supervisor saying that they agree with the, with the reduction. So we're recommending approval of this settlement.
Is the applicant here, would he want, would he like to speak to this?
I don't think they're present.
I don't think so. We'll have discussion under motion by counsel.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny for the approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Fletcher, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Urban? Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four, zero.
Mr. Ranzares?
I have a couple things just go over real quick with you if I could, and, and Claudia, can you hand out those quick sheets and maybe you can give one to Stacy and she can put it up on the monitor? Thank you. So as you know, uh, the legislature convened on Monday and all kinds of funds happening in Tallahassee. So as we do every year, we wanted to circle back with you and address, uh, some of the pending matters that are, that are, uh, being considered that have a significant impact on, on the city. There's a lot of local, a lot of bills that have impacts on, on, on the city, but we wanted to talk a little bit about with them and, and the first three that are on our sheet are, are ones that have, that have sponsors in both the Senate and the House that are moving forward. And so we wanted to bring them forward too because we think they're important enough for the city council to authorize the mayor to send letters to object to both of these. The first one has to do residential building permits. Uh, probably the most particular thing with regard here is it has condenses significantly the timeframe for staff to have to review building permit applications. Um, it, it has some very, very onerous language. By way of example, the staff will only have three days to review an application and ensure that the application is in fact complete for review, uh, and, and has to notify the, uh, the applicant in writing if it is not within three days of receiving the application. Uh, it also provides that if the application, if that three-day timeframe is not met, then staff has to review the application the way it is and can't request any additional information. Once received, there is a, there's a, currently in the statute, there's a forty-five day time period to go through the review process for applications. This bill, uh, would reduce that to nine days. So it's, it's, again, it's pretty, it's pretty onerous. And, um, and then also there currently, the law provides that the city can only ask for additional comments a total of three times during the review process. They want, this bill would reduce that to two. So, uh, it is putting some hamstringing, the, the, the building department and staff looking at these. Probably the most important thing is it adds some language in there that says if those timeframes referred to in B and C, the nine days and the, and the two are not met, then the building permit is deemed approved. So, that's pretty good. So we would like, for that one, we'd like to, uh, for the council to agree that, um, we just need direction on these items tonight, that the mayor could write a letter, uh, opposing, uh, adoption of, of that one. And the letter would be sent to the President of the Senate, Speaker of the House, the local legislation, the local legislators and the governor. The next big one in, on the, on the agenda that we wanted to talk about is the sovereign immunity bill. Currently sovereign immunity limits are capped at two hundred thousand dollars per person and three hundred thousand dollars per incident. There are two bills that are pending that are addressed as, the most significant of which is that that would raise the caps to two million five hundred thousand dollars per person or, or five million dollars per incident, uh, for claims against the, against the city. There is a Senate bill that's pending that would only, only increase those to four hundred thousand per person and six hundred thousand, uh, and, uh, but in any event, if, we would ask that the, uh, and the league had sent out a, an alert on this one and asked for, for examples, and we would put that together with the indulgence of the council about the impact that this could have on, 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 on the city. It obviously would have an incredible impact on the city's liability insurance premiums and, and, and would probably, uh, it would have a significant financial impact. The final one that we, we wanted to talk about from that, these are again, the bills that are moving forward because they have sponsors in both houses right now, is a solid waste management bill. Uh, as you know, uh, the city has, uh, has some refuse collection services that only the city provides. Uh, we, the city does, you know, the hauler, um, the, the, uh, large container in addition to the regular residential solid waste collection. So this bill would prohibit the city from, uh, from, from prohibiting independent contractors from coming into the city to do that. So we, different than what the city's allowed. Uh, the city could charge a franchise agreement, which a lot of cities do, essentially they charge a franchise, franchise agreement to haulers to do that. However, this bill has some, even some more onerous language in it where it says that the fee for that franchise agreement can only be the administrative cost of addressing it. So it restricts the amount of the fee to do that, which is less than, uh, most cities that grant franchise fees do it. Essentially, the franchise fee charges the private entity for using this, the public's roads to make money. That's the premise behind the franchise. And, uh, so, you know, they benefit from all the work and then, obviously with, with these type of containers, they can, they're heavy trucks that address, that deal with roads and issues like that. So we'd like, um, direction from the council to go ahead and, um, uh, draft letters for the mayor to sign so that, uh, opposing those bills.
Well, I'd certainly support, uh, all three of these items. Can we just have a consensus?
Yeah, that's all we need right now.
Are there any injections?
There's another page.
Yeah, I wanna talk about these two other ones, I wanna talk real quick. Yeah, and these ones we just wanna monitor that are important. The first one is a use and development regulation, it's a little bit complicated there, uh, but this is a bill, again, doesn't have a sponsor on the Senate side yet, uh, but if it does, we'll certainly get back to you on it. There is a provision in the law that allows for an applicant who is, doesn't like a decision made by a city council on a lane use matter, to go to a special magistrate proceeding and go through an administrative proceeding. Typically, it becomes, it's a fact-finding, uh, proceeding where a special magistrate, usually an attorney, uh, reviews the case and then makes a recommendation to the city council. Uh, the city council does not have to accept that recommendation. Uh, it, uh, the city council can listen to the recommendation and change its prior decision on the matter, or it cannot. This bill would require the city council to accept that recommendation of a special magistrate. So it would remove a lot of, a lot of, basically it make, it would preempt your ability to address those issues. So we're gonna monitor that one. If it looks like it gets a sponsor, uh, we'll probably, um, ask the mayor to sign, uh, send a letter that deal with that too. There are two bills related to public records that we actually want, we would, we would support moving forward. Uh, the, there's a security and fire safety systems plan out, uh, that basically makes those records that deal with security system for government, a bill, bill exempt from a public records disclosure, obviously for, for good reason. There's a bill in place that, that is set to repeal, but there's a bill in place to keep that from repealing and allow it to continue, and obviously we would support that. And the legislature in its infinite wisdom, as those of you who've been on the council from, remember the, we wrote letter, the mayor wrote a letter a couple of years ago related to a bill that they were putting in place that code enforcement could not file, could not pursue a code enforcement claim based on an anonymous complaint. So you had to get the information from the, from the complaining party. Well, now there's a bill pending that would make that, yeah, would keep the, keep that issue in place where you had to get a, a complaining person, had to give you their name and address, but now there's a bill in place to make that exempt from public records disclosure. So it's sort of a, it's a correction of something we think that happened a couple of years ago and we would support that. So, um, if those move forward, we would, we would send letters to, similar letters to the, to the legislature addressing those three topics, supporting two and, and objecting to the, the one related to land use and development regulations.
I think, are we certainly in favor of moving forward with those also if they, if they advance? Absolutely.
Okay. And, and finally, on a local level, uh, and again, since we're talking about the quote legislative, as some of you may be aware, Osheil County has been looking at a tenant's Bill of Rights ordinance, uh, and, uh, and, and they did have a, a workshop back in January regarding it, and I put in this, in the, what I've given you is that what we understand to be the five or six topics that they're looking at to include in this. They wanna provide, uh, require landlords to provide a special notice of rights as adopted as adopted by the county for every tenant that they lease to. They want to prohibit, these are the items of concern. My understanding from talking to the county attorney, there isn't a lot of direction on this yet. They're sort of working through the process to try to see if they're going to do anything. And so these are the topics. And I just wanted to point those out to you. But more importantly, we wanted to go back and ask the council, we think it's important that the city be involved in this process, most particularly because the intent, as we understand it, is that the county would adopt an ordinance that would apply countywide, even in, even incorporated St. Cloud, unless the city decided to adopt something in conflict with the county. So, so we felt it was better just to bring this back to the council, talk to you about it, make sure we understand it, so that we can monitor it, and then we can maybe have the, either the city manager could say, send a letter directed, based on the direction of the council, that the city would like to be a part of the process, and make sure that before the county commission does anything, that we get an opportunity to, to review and participate in that. So if that's okay there, we'll take care of that.
I have no objections to that.
Okay.
That would be significant.
All right, that's all.
Ms. Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. So I just wanted to provide one comment. I've been bugging Mr. Manzares about this. Like, keep an eye on it. What are they doing? What's happening? Because a lot of these, to me, and I guess if we get further into it, I would like to know which ones are duplicative of, like, state statutes because that's what most of them are. So I don't know why we would create a whole other process that you have to notify when it's in the lease that you've signed. The details are in there. It's per state statute. So that was it. I just, this was something I had asked him about. And then if it gets adopted, does it cover the city? And I think we should definitely be part of the process. So thank you for bringing this forward.
Well, we will monitor it. I've talked to the county attorney about it, and he's aware that we're watching, and we'd like to participate in it. But we'd like to have a formal request to the county commission, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Councilmember Matheny.
Oh, did you skip?
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped our city manager.
You should break your wrist.
Mrs. Miller.
Put your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to inform the council that the two reduced liens for Mr. Fink have, two code enforcement liens for Mr. Fink were paid this week.
Awesome.
Yes.
Very good.
And I also wanted to remind the council that at the March 23 meeting, there will only be three city council members present because the mayor and Councilwoman Matheny will be at the FEMA Emergency Management Institute. So all agenda items would have to have a unanimous vote.
All right, so take a careful look at what you put on that agenda, so.
That's all, thank you.
And I am so sorry that I skipped you. It wasn't intentional. Councilmember Matheny.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I sat, I sit on the local mitigation strategy board that's, you know, the county, the city, Toho Water Authority,